Okay, the next thing we're gonna do is have the clerk take the roll call.
Dale Ames.
Present.
Kelly Perro, here. Barry Wagner. Jason Alders.
Here.
Kristen Moan. Harold Jorgensen.
Here.
Jeff Pilon.
Here.
Liz Stockman, here. Robert Schiller.
Okay, the next thing, we'll have the clerk read the meeting policy.
Please register your attendance on the sign-in sheet on the back table. Copies of the agenda for the evening are also available on the back table. The agenda as printed or amended will be followed so all necessary and needed actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be addressed. The agenda may be amended by proper motion. Comments from the floor are welcome during public hearings. Those wishing to comment must register on the floor comments sheet on the back table. When comments from the floor are made, individuals must be first recognized by the chairman, clearly state your name and address for the record, and allow no more than three minutes to state your comments or concerns. Please turn all cellphones off or on silent. Thanks.
Okay, the next thing we're gonna do is approve our men and nights' meeting minutes agenda, October 22nd, 2019. Would somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Commissioner Perro made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Alders. Any discussion? Seeing none, well, I'll call for the vote. Everybody vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we're gonna do is approve the Planning and Zoning Minutes of August 27th, 2019. Somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the votes. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Alders, seconded by Commissioner Jorgensen. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next thing, we're gonna open the public hearing. The public hearing is gonna be for a request by Dan and Julia Guimont of 19009 Rhinestone Street, pin number 28, dice 33, dice 25, dice 44, dice 007, for an interim use permit to legalize a home extended business offering indoor storage within two existing pole sheds comprised of 4,960 square feet. And this time, we'll turn it over to the planner, Liz Stockton.
Thank you. Mr. Guimont's here tonight. Guimo, you say, right? Thank you.
How do you pronounce it?
Guimo.
Guimo?
Guimo.
Got it.
So, Mr. Guimont and his wife Julie own a parcel in the south-central part of Nowland. The parcel is, they actually own two parcels, but the southerly parcel here off of Rhinestone Street has their home and two existing pole sheds. They have been operating an indoor storage facility for many years. To the city's knowledge, there's never been any complaints about the operation. So, we asked the Guimo to come forward and legalize the business. There was some talk of including outdoor storage in the operation, but after looking at the site, I recommended against it for a couple of reasons. One of which, the co-property owner was not interested in the outdoor storage. Mr. Guimo is, his wife is not, so we could not process that portion of the request. So, at this time, we're looking at legalizing the indoor storage in the two buildings you see here. The vehicles behind this building shown on the aerial photo were removed at the time I made the site visit. It was definitely one of the most neatly-kept properties that I've been to in Nowland. And so what they do is, you know, just leave space for boat owners, RV owners, people that have trailers and collector cars, and wanna store them indoors for the winter. This open area you see in back is where they turn the vehicles around and kinda jockey things in and out as they need to, and then as well as this U-shaped driveway helps them maneuver the vehicles. So, they're not asking for any new access onto Rhinestone. This is a picture of the front from Rhinestone Street. House on the left, garage, and then the pole buildings are on the right. This picture is the rear yard looking at the back of the house. Mr. Guimo has just constructed a fence between, in this front area to screen the rear yard. This is the back of the property. They back up to some farmland at the rear. And this is the open area behind the one building where they kinda used to move vehicles around as needed. From a city planning standpoint, we see no problems at all with the request. And like I said, there've been really no known issues with this. So, with that, I would give it back to you, Mr. Chair, and maybe ask the applicant if he's got any comments.
Do you like to make any comments?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask the clerks to verify that the legal publication, mailing and posting has been completed.
Yes.
Okay. Now, does anybody on the commission have any questions to ask the applicant here? I was over there the other day and looked at your property. It looks very neat. You know, I like to see, puts a sign up when somebody applies for something like this. That's really nice, 'cause I went all the way down there and came back before I figured out which building it was.
Just making one comment. I made it across the street. I've been doing this storage business 25, 26 years and being one of those.
Well, that's a good sign.
That's a good sign. I would be.
Then, I'm asking the commission members, they got any questions here to ask the applicant? Seeing none, well, I'll open up to the public. Is there anybody in the public like that? I guess there is. This is going pretty smoothly. Being that we, we have any further questions we wanna ask the applicant here about this? Again, I'll come back to the public and ask the public if they have any.
I think the only ones here for the other discussions. I think you're good on the public, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Perro.
Mr. Guimont, have you actually went through all of the recommendations that have been set forth for you from Planner Stockman? Have you reviewed all those recommendations that they're asking in regards to the IUP for you? Hours of operation?
As far as, well, this, uh...
Oh, she's got some IUP approved, to approve it, she's got some stipulations that you would abide by. Have you read through those? Do you know what they are? Do we need to go through them?
I wasn't aware of any of this.
No, so, did, I emailed to a copy of the report. Did you see that? Or... I'll show you what I have here. So, what we do is, it's called a findings of fact, and we legalize what the city approves. So, the first part of the finding is just anything, your information, in other words, your address, your key, any number of, your legal description, all the facts about your property. And then here, I have highlighted in yellow, with a home business, we always like to establish hours of operation, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you about that, which is why I have highlighted it. So, a lot of times, we like to have...
Okay, we're gonna share that, please.
Yeah, we didn't know if that was acceptable to you. I just took a guess at what might be acceptable to you. It's nice if we have a home business that we at least have one or two days a week off to give the neighbor the break, although your operation is certainly not noisy.
We just wanted to have it be one time off.
Yeah, it's not like a normal thing, so, and I'm sure you have the, you know, a little action in the spring, a little action in the fall, and it's okay. So, these things, yours is quite short and fairly simple. It just says, "Storage is limited to indoor space only in the two existing buildings. Does not include indoor storage." So, if you wanna read through that, my apologies. I emailed to the email address on the application. So, my assumption was that you got that, but, so my apologies.
Oh, you didn't actually mail it though? It was email?
Yeah, not snail mail, just email.
Yeah, well, this is really, uh...
Okay, I'm so sorry.
I missed there's, um... This for me to keep?
You can keep that, yes. So, the hours of operation, is that okay with you? Or would you prefer to, I mean, I don't know if Sunday is a big...
Well, not in drive, I mean...
Well, I don't know if Sunday is a big day for people, seeing that it's, it is a weekend, if you, you know, rather...
Um, well, it can vary, so, you know, I try to, you know, if they can't, you know, do a lot of work, or, you know, it's summer during the fall, or in the spring, it's very light out, and it's gonna, I do have lights out there, and pole buildings, like...
Okay.
So, I can say it's only one time in and one time out, so, I would be able to choose.
Do you have anyone that comes routinely, like to get a camper on the weekends?
No.
No?
No, it's all like, just one time in, one time out. Just another, like, get it out.
Okay, just to store, strictly, longer-term storage?
Seasonal.
Yeah, seasonal storage would be a good word, yep. Well, if it doesn't, if you're okay with that, we like to have, you know, kind of at least one day off per week, kinda for the neighborhood to keep some. But if, you know, if you really thought Sunday was an important day, we could say Wednesday through Sunday, or whatever you, whatever you think.
Do we need to spec, do we need to specify on this, since it's a fairly low-volume business?
Well, that's another option, is you could just, if you felt comfortable enough with it.
It's a seasonal rental business, or in and out, and if people work during the week, they might wanna put their boat in on the weekend, or...
Yeah, I'd take it in on Sunday, because, you know, the work, I mean, there, you know...
Right, that's what I was thinking, right.
So, with the boards in there, that I would amend it and say there's no set hours.
Yeah.
We'll do a closing meeting. Okay. If there's no more questions, we'll close the public hearing then. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now, we'll take action upon it. The biggest thing is the discussion of the hours. It was mentioned, perhaps, not having anything in there, but I think it's a good idea to have a policy in there, just add Sunday to it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea, if you want to just limit the time of day. Otherwise, what you could say is, if hours of operation or noise becomes a problem, that requires the property owner to come back and go through the process again, or something, you know? But if it, if it's never an issue and we don't get any complaints, which I wouldn't guess that we would after all these years, you know, it is your prerogative to let it, let it ride. But, you know, again, if, well, this is an interim use permit, not a conditional use permit. Some of our conditional use permits can transfer to the next property owner, who may abuse or change the situation a little. In this case, when the Guimos sell the property, or, you know, beyond or outside of their family, then the interim use permit goes away, so, not as big of a concern here.
Is not a problem with being setting a precedence for other people?
No, I think it's completely individual, based on, you know, per property, per use. So, you're okay there.
I would propose that. I mean, if I'm coming back from up north and keep my camper in there, and it's eight o'clock, it's like, oh, it's too late, it's closed, versus the last 20 years, we've been able to put it in there anytime we wanted to.
Any other discussion here on this? If not, I'd like somebody to entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the IUP, consistent with the planning and zoning regulations, with the amendment that we remove the hours of operations, and include a noise-specific issue that would drive change.
Okay, Commissioner Alders made his motion. If somebody'd like to second this, just a second. Okay, Commissioner Jorgensen, second motion. Any further discussion on it?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Maybe we can add the noise right to the number four, where it also kind of already says about, shall not generate excessive noise. We can probably add it to right there.
Number four?
Yeah.
What do you, what, what, what are you saying? I don't understand.
That if the noise does become a problem, to come back before the planning and zoning for the change in the IUPs.
One that wasn't included in yours?
That's what I'm just saying, just to add it.
She's just saying, move it down there, and we'll strike, we'll strike number one completely.
Okay, okay, we can do that. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded.
Jorgensen.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jorgensen. Okay, the next thing, we're gonna have a discussion about the Holsons property. Let our planner at this time take the floor.
Okay, so, I've been working with the Holsons, boy, as far as maybe two years ago even, they first came to me and asked, hey, what do we have to do? We wanna split our lots, we wanna build our retirement home. They have 80 acres, kind of in the southwest part of Nowland, right on the Elk River border. They're on Boff Street. They have a farmstead in the front they would like to sell with 30 acres, keep 10 from the front, and then patch it to the back, so they have a nice big chunk of 50 acres for privacy where they would like to build a home. It sounds easy, right? But access has been a little bit of a challenge for a couple of reasons. What I wanted to show first is the kinda regional aerial photo here. So, this is their 80 acres, and they abut Rolling Hills subdivision to the north, and Driscoll Street, which comes down as a dead end intended to be extended in the future. And up here to the west further is Hallis Street. And because of a lot of, you know, past subdivisions, and the way our ordinance used to read was that we only required 33 feet of public street frontage. So, up here, if I could zoom in, I would, we have a 66-foot right-of-way with two larger lots that both gain access from the dead end of Hallis Street. So, you know, in their minds, this was just a piece of cake, and they could run a driveway up to Driscoll and, you know, be done with it. Well, since we've changed our ordinances, we have the requirement of the 150-foot minimum on a public street of road frontage, and plus the 300-foot width. The lot width hasn't changed, but the minimum 150 feet of frontage is our current requirement. So, we, they and we were working with a surveyor to come up with options for this front 40. The subdivision will only be involving the front 40 and not the back 40, which is why you only see one PID number on their application. So, they would like to come off of Driscoll Street, so they have all this frontage on Boff, but they would like to keep that with this farmstead and this remaining 30 acres, so that someone, you know, there's, there's options there. There's someone that could have a, you know, farm it like they do. There is developmental potential, but I think keeping it together as a single parcel is, in their minds, the best way to market it. So, in looking at the extension of Driscoll Street, it, so, let me back up for just a second. So, this is the overall concept for the front 40, which shows long-term how street access would work to serve potentially eight lots, which is, which is our five-acre average, how this would lay out. So, then, in turn, they prepared a proposed lot split with two lots, Parcel A and Parcel B, Parcel B being the 30-acre piece. Parcel A is 10 acres. It would be attached to the rear 40, which would create a legal access for their whole parcel. So, this is 300 feet of length extended from Driscoll, but the cost to build the road would be, you know, insurmountable as far as building one, you know, one single-family home. And, you know, what happened was, is the city engineer saw this, and he said, "I'm not gonna support that. That is not the way our ordinance is written." In other words, everybody is supposed to kinda foot their own bill for their road frontage, because in the future, Parcel B, if and when it develops, will be stuck with building this segment of road in front of Parcel A, which would be the Holsons', you know, for their benefit, and that becomes the burden of Parcel B. Well, you know, it is a struggle, because the Holsons have been, you know, wonderful residents for many years. We also have to look at the property rights, their ability to use their parcel versus, you know, what's considered premature development, or the inability to provide street frontage. So, it's, you know, admittedly, a lot of work to go through the options, and to help them understand where we're coming from as a city. We have to abide by our ordinances, but at the same time, you know, what will, what will work for them and be financially feasible for them to access that back 40? So, Shane, the city engineer, created just this regional map of how the streets lay out. And it's, you know, the concept is great. We have no problems with how this may lay out in the future. And everybody acknowledges that someday Hallis Street will come down, and all these streets will connect up, and, you know, even into Elk River. So, in looking at this first option, which was what they submitted, we, there are, there's basically one option. So, we, in order to avoid construction of the street, because of the financial burden, they would have to ask for a variance, but they don't meet variance criteria under the city code, because variance criteria cannot be economic in nature, and it cannot be created by the applicant. So, one option would be to go this route, and to allow them to dedicate the 66 feet of street frontage, but then approve what we call a flag lot conditional use permit, which basically allows them interim access into this lot without the 150 feet of legal frontage. So, that's what a flag lot is basically doing, is a way to, for a city to deviate from that frontage requirement. So, this is one option, is to have Driscoll Street come straight down. Option two would be to have Driscoll Street sort of do this L-shaped thing. Now, it effectively serves the same purpose as option one, but this southerly portion follows the future street alignment. Option three would be to have a flag lot right up against the lot line of the neighboring Rolling Hills, again, 66 feet wide, and just have it in a east-west form instead of north-to-south. So, in this case, the 10 acres could be just a simple rectangle. It wouldn't have to be an L-shaped like this. The one thing I do like about option one is that the potential is here to subdivide a five-acre lot, which would benefit from this frontage, and then, as the rest of it is developed, there can always be, you know, additional access created. So, for option four, as is in your report, is a flag lot all the way out to Boff Street, which, one, is a little cumbersome in terms of driveway length, and they weren't real keen on building such a long driveway and maintaining that. The other thing, or problem that that creates, is it separates this five-acre parcel that would be Parcel C from the rest of the acreage. Now, we did calculate the accessory building sizes on Parcel C, or in the existing farmstead, and those are of a total size to be within our 6,400 square feet. So, in other words, a five-acre lot could work here, and they could opt to sell that separate from, you know, this 25, or whatever the remainder is. Finally, without any flag lot at all, and strictly following the ordinance, they could utilize 150 or 300 feet of width onto Boff Street, and wouldn't require any special permit. But again, they're not real keen on, A, using up this much land just for access back to the rear 40, and also to build and maintain such a long driveway. They are selling the front in part, you know, to pay for their retirement home back there. So, those are the options. So, those are the options. And I'm hoping you understood sort of these examples I gave at their back, which I've used in previous discussions. This one shows three properties that were required to build the extension of a cul-de-sac to gain a lot or two as part of a minor lot split. This was a property of two-hundred-and-fifth, where we also did a flag lot CUP, and they also dedicated some right-of-way for future use. And we allowed that flag lot. They were actually splitting one lot down here and a second lot on the west side. But it was the same concept where we, as a city, we don't accept that right-of-way until the street is built, but we basically allow the property owner to use that and to maintain that in the interim. So, there was a, basically, a little mini-development agreement prepared to outline what the, what the agreement was exactly and what the parameters were. So, those are the thoughts from a planning standpoint, and those are the ways that we could legally, legally achieve access back to their property. So, at this time, I'd like to have the, or allow the Holzum's, if you're okay, Mr. Chair, make any comments they wish, or they can say, you know, which is their, I'm guessing, this option one is their preferred option, although I haven't spoken, you know, to see how they feel about this option three, which is also fairly simple. So, we can ask them just generally where they're at. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Chris Holzel. One-nine-two-five-six, Baw Street in Holby. We were talking with Liz, and we spent quite a bit of money to split that lot off already because it is already surveyed and everything is ready to go to enter with the city and with the county. So, like she was saying, we're just sort of looking to build a house on our back forty and need access, economical access with electric and gas from Driscoll. So, that's kind of what we're thinking. This option of having the CUP and the flag lot and dedicating, you know, sixty-six feet by three-hundred feet that's already been surveyed, it's already, the mark, the markers sticks are out there and it's all been surveyed, so. There was also talk of, you know, if the city would let us do this, that we would pay, I believe it was three thousand dollars for the street improvement that happened this year, and we would be fine with doing that. So, I guess if there's any questions for, for us from you, you should sure entertain them right now, so.
What do you mean? The, the city would come in and build a road up?
No, no.
Mr. Chair.
Driscoll was, was resurfaced.
Driscoll was resurfaced this early summer.
So, some of each resident was assessed.
So, all the residents had to pay a three-thousand-dollar assessment for their hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage. And granted, we only have sixty-six feet of frontage that we have never paid anything on. It was, the idea came up, well, that's not fair for the residents that live there now to have paid that and for us to access that and not pay anything, which is, you know, a good argument, and we are more than willing to pay that three-thousand-dollar assessment, assessment, so.
What's our engineers feeling about it? I think I read something where he doesn't like this idea of putting these, give the easement, but not put the road in, right?
Well, right, but like I said, there, there is somewhat of a burden that becomes, you know, part of them selling parcel B, but if they disclose that to the parcel B buyer, I mean, that's fine. It has happened in the past. I mean, it is a unique situation because without the front forty, the back forty is landlocked. So, we do have to resolve and, you know, determine a permanent form of access. When the city engineer was going around and around with their surveyor, it was related to, you know, building the road versus not building the road, but I finally said, you know, Shane, it is, flag lots are legal under our ordinance. So, if they want to go through the process of requesting the flag lot, they have the right to do that. And I said, "It doesn't matter from a planning standpoint if that comes off of Driscoll or if that comes off of Baw. If the city is comfortable with it coming off of Driscoll, it is a natural alignment or future extension of Driscoll, which, in my mind, is acceptable." So, they have put out a ton of money for their surveyor for city application costs of not only wetland delineation but a lot split. So, it would be another four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. I said I would waive the escrow if they understood that they're still responsible for the, you know, the review fees and everything. So, that is what they're trying to decide, and they chose to come here to discuss it before just handing over the money. And that was a reasonable, you know, compromise or whatever.
It would, it would have been nice to have discussed this before we put out the money. We're already into this, about twelve thousand dollars. So, that's why we're here. We don't want to, if you're not going to let us potentially do this, we're, we don't want to have to spend any more money than what we already have, so.
So...
Because we did the, you know, we contacted Liz, we did the wetland delineations, we did the buildability on the ten acres and on the back forty acres for, you know, a home, home site and buildability site on the parcel A. And then, the wetland delineations for the whole property have been done. So, any future development, they shouldn't have to do that because it's, it's been done already, so. But as you can see, the, on the south of our home site right now, go all the way down to the...
Down here?
The corner, but go, right there, that's wetland right there. It's been delineated and marked. And then, kind of in the middle of the farm, that area right there, kind of going around, is all wetland stuff right there, so. It's all been marked. They actually came out and re-marked it because it must not have been good enough, because they moved the, they put more flags in.
Oh, did they?
Yes, they did. And they did that, I believe, last Thursday.
So, what happens is, yeah, they have a meeting with the city and other, other people besides the delineators, and then they all have to agree on the...
Yep, so they must not have agreed, so that some of the wetland, the wetland to the south of us, to the south of our home site wasn't altered, but the wetland...
In here?
In, in that area was extended a little bit.
Which way?
More kind of towards the east and not so much...
The side over here?
Yep, to the east and just a little bit more, really wasn't anything to the north where they had marked it before.
Well, that's good.
We would still, you know, if this, if sometime in the future, if the land does develop, you know, there's still access on that one plan that was up there, our...
Oh, up here?
Yeah, to go across and go towards the city of Elk River.
Yeah, you can squeak through there. You can squeak through there with a driveway for sure.
Driveway or, you know, a future road at sixty-six feet, so. You know, if, if this would get bought by a developer, we would, you know, surely have the, the three-hundred footage. And in the future, if it would expand to the, to the west, you know, the driveway would come off right by where the building site would be. And the building site, Liz, if you can kind of highlight where we're thinking about building?
Up in here, yeah.
Yeah, right there. So, that future road could possibly come right in front of the, the future home site.
Well, they, yeah, they like the future road coming down this way versus running up along the lot line. I mean, then it can be a two-sided street versus just one here.
That would give a developer more opportunity to develop the land, our land anyways from that vantage point.
So, Chris, are you saying that you would be agreeable then to this option two or option one? Or which is your preference?
Our, our preference is that, you know, a conditional use permit coming off of that cul-de-sac and, you know, as soon as we cross into our property, going to the west with the driveway, you know...
Right in here somewhere?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Is it a cul-de-sac today? Driscoll, is it a cul-de-sac up there?
Temporary cul-de-sac, right.
It's a temporary cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's, it's not a fully formed one, but you can turn trucks around there.
I didn't know...
There's two driveways off that could be the cul-de-sac.
There's a driveway, we have a neighbor to the north of our homestead and then to the northwest of our, of the parcel A.
You take a look at your, your map, your H, the one-nine-three-one-oh and one-nine-three-oh-five both come off the place.
It says, when reading the, the information you have in front of you, said that one address, I can't remember what the address was, but their driveway was twenty-five feet from our lot line.
Oh, yeah, that was this...
Yes, correct.
Up here.
Yeah, that's one-nine-three-one-oh, yeah.
So, my, the reason I highlighted that in the report is because one of the conditions of the flag lot CUP is that you be separated from other driveways. So, if you were...
Yeah, was, was it forty feet from...
Well, it was half of the hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage, so it would be seventy-five. So, if you were okay with the fif, having it fifty feet south of the property line?
And, you know, it could be, and another reason for doing this is, you know, a lot of that property with the, you know, some of it isn't farmable, but we still would like to farm the property that we're keeping. And that would roughly be twenty-five acres, I believe.
Oh, like this ten plus whatever?
Yeah, plus that, just there.
So, your plan is to keep parcel B altogether, right?
Yeah, keep, yeah, keep, keep parcel A for ourselves.
Keep parcel A for yourselves. Keep parcel B as the original home site and sell...
And sell the thirty acres with the home site.
With the home site?
Correct.
And then the other parcel, is that going to be annexed into parcel A or that's separate?
Yes, we're going to try to, with the county, try to annex that with, with parcel A.
So, parcel A will become a fifty-acre lot at some point? And what's driving the need to, I think we need to extend Driscoll down? Why can't they just move their lot over the green line and just drive right into the...
That, that's what, that's how it is surveyed right now, but with the access...
The hundred-and-fifty foot?
The hundred-and-fifty, well, there's three-hundred feet of, where that green is, but we, what, what's the word?
The ordinance that says hundred and fifty. Well, the frontage?
The, well, not the frontage, but...
In, in essence, that's what's going to happen.
Yes, correct.
Sorry to interrupt, is that their driveway will just come off of the cul-de-sac and they'll come in and just drive to the home. And, but what this is doing, the flag lot CUP is basically giving them legal access with sixty-six feet of frontage...
That's due to the, to the city.
In the interim, yeah. I mean, it's interim access, basically, because when the street is constructed to the full width and accepted by the city, then...
The developer or whoever does not have to pay for that piece of property. They can just go ahead and take off of it, you know, and it's a win for us and a win for them. They don't have to buy the property and we have a potential lot we can sell. Or sell it to the, to, sell it to the developer and they could do whatever they're willing to do. And then just have access off of one, part of, one of the other streets or have the hundred-and-fifty-foot access off of that street from parcel A.
What was the reasoning for the hundred-and-fifty-foot change?
Well, we, because we've had a lot of problems with, a thirty-three-foot access does not allow for extension of a future street. It becomes a problem with unequal frontage. You know, some people have thirty-three or sixty-six versus a whole quarter-quarter and you've got some inequality with assessments and different things, you know, street maintenance. It limits where the access point can be onto roads, which may not always be the most desirable location, you know, with a high point or a low, a hill or a valley. So, it's more equitable frontage and kind of sharing, you know, but we did leave the door open on purpose for unique situations and, you know...
Like I said, this is just an informational, kind of for...
Yeah.
For you, for you and for us, like I said, we've already spent about twelve thousand dollars doing what we've already done in this picture. We just don't want to have to spend anymore if it's going to, not going to be something that we can do.
If you would tell us that, that green strip there, that's thirty-three feet?
No, that would be sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
So, that would be a, it would dedicate that as right-of-way.
That was what I was looking for.
It would be an easement. It would be a road easement, but the city would in turn, through approval of the flag lot CUP, allow them to use it for driveway purposes until such time as it becomes built and accepted by the city. Then, they have the full width of three-hundred-foot lot width there.
Well, who says it? Developer comes in, he may not want, even want a road going out there. You never know.
He may not want what?
A road going out to, on the Elk River side.
Oh, well, he, he would have to. I mean, that would be one of the conditions is that whoever developed parcel B would have to have a road that went toward the west. That is a requirement in the ordinance, subdivision ordinance, that you have to have dead-end street up to your border or further to provide future access to adjacent parcels. So, there would be something off of Baw, just like the concept plan shows here. There would be a road off of Baw, one that connects to Driscoll, which is obviously there, and then one that goes on the north side of this wetland, and then one that goes through these two wetlands here down to this forty. You know, we, we've allowed in the past, and it's very common, it's not just, you know, Burn's Township. Townships typically have pretty loose rules and, but flag, flag lots and irregular shapes and, you know, easement access and all sorts of things creates long-term problems. And at making this a CUP requirement forces the property owners to come before the city council so that we can get a handle on what happens now and, and how it looks in the future.
Do you have any questions? Like, this is just an informational for, for both parties. Do you have any questions, other questions for me or for my wife now? Do you have any questions? Other questions for me or for my wife?
So Liz, so I'm clear here. This is, this meets the requirement here for the width of the lot?
This is 300 feet, right, so.
And then this is the 66 feet here?
Correct. So there, they would deed this 66 feet here to the city.
Yep.
They would own what you see in the red. They would combine this parcel A with the back 40 so that that, they have one parcel and then they can do, you know, that's legal access for the rear.
Yep.
But it also, you know, ties everything together so that when they split again or the next person that may own it or one of their children or whoever, that, you know, they come back to us and we know, you know, we know what happened here. We have history. We have parameters specified.
And this is aligned to the future layout of what this property is supposed to look like if it was split up, right?
Right, and like I said, what we were looking at.
That was, that was our concept plan that our surveyor presented to us and to Liz.
Is that concept something that you're fine with too?
Whoever buys it can do whatever they want with it.
Just asking. It does affect you now.
It doesn't affect us now.
Whoever buys it has got to have their exit road here. They got to have something that dead ends down to here and they got to connect with that road. That's the requirements?
Yes, right. And, you know, this road.
However they split it up, they can, but it's got to connect to that point up there. It's got to provide access here and it's going to provide access there.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. So this could move up or down. You know, this could be a different angle slightly, but generally, this is how it has to work out given the wetlands.
Given the wetlands and that's 30 acres, so they're going to have six buildable lots.
Exactly. So like I said, they showed nine here. It's beside the point. We're not approving that number of lots.
Right.
We're just approving a two-lot split anyway.
And we're essentially saying, we have approved the CUP in the flag lot. It'd be on this developer, whoever buys that to finish the street when they're doing the rest of the work.
Right, this, if this person, yeah, wanted to split, right.
Somebody buys that 30 and wants to just carve it, it just stays a driveway with.
At this time, we have a couple of people interested in doing that.
I have the same thing at home right now.
You were our example.
Don't tell anybody. Don't tell anybody where I live.
This piece of.
That was quite a big idea of the plan in its own.
So does the commission chair, does the commission have any, any questions or concerns? You know, it seems with all the work that's been done, it's pretty straightforward. It's consistent with what we've done as a city before. Yeah, to me, A seems like the most straightforward thing to do, right?
Oh, if it was me, I'd be doing, I'd be going for option one too. I mean, that's just the most logical because, yeah, why?
And like I said before, everything is done, ready to be submitted. You know, with the exception of the conditional use permit, where you have to have the public hearing and notify all my neighbors and if anybody speaks against it. Actually have one of my neighbors here, they own the piece that comes off of Alice, I believe.
Yeah, they are, they are up here, right here. It's L-shaped piece.
And we have 33 feet of frontage.
So they have a legal lot of record here, right? Which is why they were allowed to build on that with that existing frontage.
I don't, I don't see any issues with it. I, I would encourage you to stick to option one. It keeps the options for parcel B's future development a lot more open than if you were to go with, say, option three. And option four is just another access point then right to a main road. And it creates you a very, very long driveway.
Like I said, we're doing it because of economical, because of the access to power and gas from Driscoll Street. And we want to keep probably the nicest piece of our property, what we think is the nicest piece of it.
One good thing about Elk River, huh?
What's that?
That you can get gas there.
I can get gas up there.
Huh?
Up at Driscoll.
They have, they have gas up at Driscoll.
It's out of nowhere, Mr. Chair.
This is a nice home site.
Yeah. You know, at first we were thinking about building up, we have a pretty nice hill back there, but then we kind of decided, hey, let's just keep that as our backyard. And that's kind of where we're sitting right now, so. Like I said, we just want to, we just came to you, you know, with Liz's, Liz's, you know, thought processes, hey, we can do this. But we didn't want to have to spend any more money if this wasn't going to be something, it wasn't going to be something that we could do.
Liz, do we have to make a recommendation to the city?
No, I would just make it known if anyone's opposed. If you're not, then we can, you know.
What's most aligned with our zoning, planning and zoning is that option right there, right? If it is developed on the future.
I would agree with that option.
Because then it would unhook a potential future CUP if a street does come through, right? Because it wouldn't be a flag lot anymore.
Right, exactly.
No, I think it's a good plan as long as we can fly the flag lots. Shane's okay with that now, so.
Is the engineer fine with this proposal?
Yeah, I mean, he'll.
He'll back this one?
He, yeah.
Because we were already come last, in September, to the, to this meeting and it was, oh, hold it. We got a, the city engineer doesn't like this, so then Liz kind of puts something like this together and it's good to us, so.
The only thing I would say is, did you read through the flag lot criteria bill carefully? Because you do have to provide a turnaround back there, big enough for an emergency vehicle. And I mean, it can be gravel, but as long as it's, you know, a T or a Y, whatever, or a circle, as long as you do that and.
You would like the fire trucks to be able to get in there and drop their tank.
Yeah.
Yes.
We did that. People across the road from us and they're way in the back of the property and had to drop the drop tank out on the highway and run hoses all the way back, so.
No, you know, whatever is required, we will meet the requirements.
And I mean, this, you know, putting a driveway through parcel A there, I mean, that part is not nearly as steep as this, so I, you know, I can't imagine that you'd be required to do anything out of the ordinary for the driveway. There's, you know, there were some criteria referencing that, but.
Yeah, it's fairly level to.
Through here, yeah.
Through there.
Basically farmed right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would say, yeah, if you, you know, if you stay at 50 feet south approximately of that lot line, you'll meet that distance criteria, so, yeah.
All right, then we'll go forward with our applications and be in contact with you, Liz.
Good luck and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, no.
Let's go.
Thank you.
Okay. Earl, we haven't said anything, heard anything from you.
He heard a few motions.
No, what do you think of this?
I think we spend a lot of money we don't have to spend.
That's true.
Because we're not going about this. We've got to figure out that the next developer could totally change everything we did there.
Well, we all street has to go to Driscoll.
We kind of.
We spend a lot of money that don't have to be spent. You're putting one lot in there right now. We're wasting a lot of money just for, we did the same thing down here on the Norman property.
That's what they wanted.
No, they did not want that down there, absolutely not.
That's what these guys want.
I don't think, I think they'd like to get by with a lot less expense on that thing because all we're putting is one house in there. We spent $12,000 just to litigate this?
That's what survey costs are.
No, 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 no. I've surveyed, I've surveyed many properties and you don't have to go through all that to get to where you're going.
I spent that, we spent that too.
Well, you probably didn't survey, you got to do the job.
Okay, well, we're not going to argue about that right now. Did you, anything else you want to put to this property?
Well, it's just a simple fact that you chase away a lot of good development because of this because people are not going to pay that kind of money.
Well, it's already been paid, so it's.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a lot of waste.
We, in order to do this, put a house back there, we had to do it.
Yeah.
We just don't want to have to do any more. It's not going to be approved.
Right.
And that's why we're here. We just wanted to have an informational meeting with you.
As long as all of us are agreement with it, that's all you need, then you're.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, that is all we need tonight. And just for the record, it doesn't matter if you're splitting one lot or eight. You still have to do a wetland delineation. Yes, it's costly. We need a survey. If you're cutting a piece out of 40 acres, yes, you need to do a concept plan to show how it fits into the overall scheme. That is good planning. That is good zoning. They were more than cooperative. I know it's a lot of money. A lot of people don't expect that. But that is how a good city operates and that is how you get cohesive neighborhoods. You get houses back from wetlands so you're not infringing upon our natural environment. I could go on and on and on, but it's, it's the right way to do it. And I thank them and I thank you for operating in that manner.
So next steps for the Holsoms are what?
So they will submit a new application for the CUP part of it.
Okay, and the CUP is going to outline the flag lot.
The flag lot part, right, and then we'll have a, they'll come back to you for a public hearing.
Okay.
They could do it in November or wait till January and, yeah, then we'll move it forward.
We'd like to do it as soon as possible, so in November, the city would go in front of the city council in December?
Correct, yeah, that's the way it would work.
That works.
All right, well, good.
Okay, we.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And getting back to where, that was on the public hearing. You're going to be coming to the planning and zoning with your.
City council.
Or the city council, you have to come to the city council, second Tuesday in.
November.
Mr. Gimo, I will mail you everything, okay? So you have it. Again, my apologies for that. So the second Tuesday in November, I will send you an agenda and us another copy of those findings. There's one more official meeting. This is a recommending body and then the city council makes the final decision. Okay? All right, thanks.
Okay, we have, we don't have anything else on the agenda?
No, that's it.
So somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a. Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Commissioner Aldous made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Hold it, so I'll second it, okay. Where'd you end up?
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. Yes, we will. Okay, thanks.
Oh, what a mess. Time to move on.
It worked out pretty good, made it a winning case.
It made his life easier too.